So this is the August 7th, August 17th?
Seventeenth.
Yes, 2021 Meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board. Those in attendance are George Kingston, our newest board member Cassandra Saraswello, Peter Punderson, John Torsha, myself Russell Denver, the Director of Planning and Community Development Bethany Yow, and also from the Office of Planning and Community Development is Rebecca Jones. So I'm required by Master General Law to see, to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting. Just so you'll know that we are being recorded by LCAT, but if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized and brought into the meeting. Seeing, seeing none. The first item would be acceptance of the August 10th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Those members that were in attendance, hopefully you've had an opportunity to review them. And there are no corrections or additions. Do I have a motion to accept?
Actually, I just, I noticed at the bottom, I think it was like the last vote, it was recording Pete Punderson is voting, and I know Pete wasn't there.
Good pickup, John.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I will just, George, myself, and John by roll call. George Kingston?
Aye.
John Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a aye as well. So it is with great pleasure that I introduced our newest Planning Board member Cassandra Saraswello, who is here for our first, or for her first meeting. So welcome Cassandra. Would you like to tell the, the people on the planning board and those that might be watching, a little bit, something about yourself?
Hi. Yeah, so my name is Cassandra Charaswello. I own a business in town. I've lived in town for over 20 years. I'm just really excited to become part of the process, being on the opposite side as a business owner, opening a business, and then moving my business in town, to now be kind of on this side of the table and assist with this part.
Great, well, welcome. Appreciate the fact that you stepped forward to do this. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Yes, first item, item number one, excuse me, case SPRW 2021-33, request for site plan review waiver for McKenzie Vault Incorporated and Earn Manufacturing and Distributing Business at 21 Deer Park Drive, assessors parcel ID 22-7-4 in an existing structure in the Industrial Garden Zoning District, applicant McKenzie Vault Incorporated, PO Box 264, East Long Meadow, MA.
There's someone from the applicant available?
Yeah, they should be coming in. There we go.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. I was clicking a thousand buttons. Yes, Scott McKenzie, on behalf of McKenzie Vault here with you. Well, I want to tell you, so I drove through there on Sunday. You have a beautiful parcel of property, well-maintained building. It's just, just a delight to be able to see that type of quality here in East Long Meadow.
Oh, thank you very much.
Good that. So tell us about what you'd like to do.
Sure. So for those not familiar with our business, we've been in town for about 30 years. My dad built the building, 165, 167 Benton Drive, I think in 88 or 89, and we moved in about that time. And we put an addition on maybe 15 years ago. And as John stated, there were designers and manufacturers of cremation urns for the funeral industry. So we were quite busy going into 2019, 2020, and the COVID pandemic just put us over the edge. And I, the trajectory of where cremation is going, we needed more space to be able to operate safely and be able to expand it in the future. So we luckily were able to find this parcel here at 21 Deer Park. And with the Mayberries and other longstanding family businesses in town, who were the owners at the time, we actually were able to swap buildings. They got, feel like they got better use out of the building that, that my family had built, kind of as a duplex. And this building that we're in now is, I believe, you know, much better situated for an owner operator than to be divided up, as they had maybe once planned. So we're here. And I think today's meeting for site plan review and or waiver is to, is associated with a business operating license or certificate. Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, on the titling of that. And I, we don't have an active one. I don't know if we once had one. I certainly apologize for not being up to par with that particular license. But our taxes are up to date and paid. So I know those are the big numbers. And I'm just looking to answer any questions anyone has about our usage here. We're not changing any entrances or exits or, or use of the building in terms of manufacturing and distribution. Just as Russ said, you know, trying to improve the property, you know, for our use and then just for the, for the betterment of the, the industrial park here in Deer Park.
Any questions for the petitioner?
You know, I drove in there, the building looks good, not doing any, any external modifications. So it's great that you're still in town and didn't go someplace else.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we're glad to have stayed as well.
If there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Congratulations and future good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, item number two, case SPRW 2021-34, request for site plan review waiver for embracing the Creative Child LLC, a business providing behavioral and educational services for children and adults with autism at 55 Deer Park Drive, assessors parcel ID 21-11-8, in an existing structure in the Industrial Garden Zoning District, applicant SJJ Holding LLC at 232 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So I see two people there. I see Sarah Gale and I see attorney Joseph Lang. So either one of you go right ahead.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm Joseph Lang. I represent Sarah Gale's Holding Company, S J G Holding Company, and embracing the creative child. Ms. Gale operates, currently operates on North Main Street, Premier Source Credit Union, where she's a tenant. And she's interested in buying this location, to operate, continue to operate her business as it's grown. And she needs a larger space. And we're interested in buying the old Bullocks Apparel at 55 Deer Park Drive. Fifty, that's a two-unit property. Fifty-seven Deer Park is going to be, still has a DJ in the property. He will remain. The closing was scheduled for Friday. Unfortunately, it's been delayed. But we hope to have it closed soon. And we will be paying all the municipal obligations we paid at the time of the closing.
Sarah, do you want to add anything?
I think that's it. I, you know, I was grateful that I found a property to stay in East Long Meadow. I live in East Long Meadow as well. And I was very happy I was able to find a property big enough for us to stay in the community because we do service a lot of individuals with autism in the community. And it was very important for us to stay community-based in East Long Meadow.
Great. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
That's so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much for staying in town, and we appreciate your continued investment with the town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Torsha.
Yes, item number three, case SPRW 2021-35, request for site plan review waiver for Deanna's Diaper Delights and More, a home office at 42 Holland Drive, assessors parcel ID 85-45-10 in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Deanna Messier, 42 Holland Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
So Deanna, we see a name. You appear to be muted. There you are.
No, sorry.
Okay. So tell us about your business, a little bit, something about yourself and what you hope to be able to do there.
Okay, I'm very nervous, by the way. This is my first time doing something like this. So I am 37. I moved to East Long Meadow right at the beginning of COVID started happening. I worked before COVID at the courthouse for many years, due to being diagnosed with brain cancer. I wanted to create stuff. I wanted to make memories and things that like people would want to have or would want to see and stuff like that. So I started making diaper cakes, money cakes. I started helping out with weddings and birthdays and doing things that would be there to go set up with. And there's so much potential. I can do shirts. I made the East Long Meadow Girls Indoor Soccer Team their jerseys for them this past season. So I'm just looking to find my little place here and hopefully grow and then maybe get a side of my own one day.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Are you actually manufacturing and baking the cakes at this location?
So what they are, I have diaper, money, wedding, birthday, and graduation. So what they are, they're not actual cakes. They're made, like the diaper cakes are made out of diapers. The money cakes, I take the bills, I roll them up, and I turn them into, they all are like tiered like a cake. But it's out of actual like diapers, money, graduation supplies, stuff like that.
So no, no commercial vehicles?
No. I deliver.
Okay.
And then if I'm going to set up for a wedding or birthday and stuff like that, I bring all of my stuff with me, go there, set it up, take it down, and then come back.
Is this something you thought of?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, good idea.
Very creative title.
Approximately how much of your house is devoted to this?
My entire basement. I'm sitting in it. Would you like a view?
No. You know, want to make sure that it's still basically a house.
A residence.
It's not a manufacturing facility disguised as a house.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm in the basement.
Okay.
I had the basement refinished to be able to do this.
Okay. Hopefully it'll let you out. So, all right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And you did a good job. So. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
All right, case SPRW 2021-36, request for site plan review waiver for Gullible Gardens, a home office at 11 Dawes Street, assessors parcel ID 34-2-0, in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Lisa Marie Gullible, 11 Dawes Street, East Long Meadow, MA, 01028.
So I sent her in, but I don't know where she went.
Okay.
She's not even in the audience anymore. I don't know what I just did.
Okay, we just wait a second and see if she reappears?
Yeah. It's possible that maybe she accidentally clicked out.
Yeah. We, we could go to the next item and then come back if everyone's okay with that. Everyone all right with that?
Yes.
Okay. So John, why don't you call the next item?
All right, item number five, case SPRW 2021-37, request for site plan review waiver for Mothers Helpers Long Meadow, a home office at 34 Ann Street, assessors parcel ID 24-28-73 in the Residence C zoning district, applicant Rebecca Dennis, 34 Ann Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So is the petitioner available?
Yes, let's see if this works. Here we go.
Hello. You're muted.
How's that?
Oh, better. Thank you.
Great. Hi, guys.
Hi. So hopefully you've been watching and you can, you know what we, what we'd like to hear from you.
Yep. Yep, I do. Oh, I've been here the whole time. I just, I had it set up wrong. So my name's Rebecca. I'm new to East Long Meadow also. I moved here last July. So I have been a nanny on and off for about, like, just over 15 years. I am looking to set up a babysitting agency, a franchise of the one that I worked for in the Metro West area. The difference between, you know, my agency and something like Care.com or Sitter City is that I personally interview all of the candidates, all of the sitters. I do a criminal background check, a DMV check. I not only like call every single reference, but we really make sure that they have background experience. We do all the tedious scheduling and finigling on last minute needs or covers for maybe your situation, you know, is something consistent and you know you want a long-term job. So basically, we're just there to help parents, anyway.
So essentially, is it all online for the most part?
Yeah, sorry. Yep, that part of it. Yeah, so I would operate all out of my office, except I would meet for interviews. I'm thinking about maybe renting a space, depending on how I line up the timings, or maybe just meeting in town at other places, you know, granted the whole COVID stuff going on. So we'll see. But yeah, nothing at the house.
I know a good place called My Main Squeeze you could probably go meet. So this is, there is no childcare at all provided at the location, correct?
No, it's all just connecting parents with caregivers.
Okay. All right.
And it's Long Meadow, not East Long Meadow, only because all of my relationships that I've started so far are just in Long Meadow. But we will serve East Long Meadow also.
You can always correct the name later.
Exactly.
All right, questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha? Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a aye as well. Best of luck to you.
So much.
Thank you. So can we go back to item four, John?
Yes. Do you want me to reread it into the?
Yeah, why don't you do that, please?
Okay. Item number four, request for site plan review waiver for Gullible Gardens, a home office at 11 Dawes Street, assessors parcel ID 34-2-0, in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Lisa Marie Gullible, 11 Dawes Street, East Long Meadow, MA, 01028. Hopefully I'm taking that last name correct. I apologize if I'm not.
Hello, Liz Lisa Mary?
Yes, Lisa Mary.
Hi.
Sorry about your ears. Somehow it kicked me out.
Okay. Do you have a camera?
Yes, I do.
Oh, there you are. Okay, hi, how are you?
Good.
So hopefully you were listening to the, to the previous applicant. So tell us a little something about yourself and about the business. And we'll start from there.
Yes, so I graduated during COVID in environmental science. I concentrated in ecological restoration. And the reason why is I've been gardening since I was a child. And I just wanted to have, just to be knowledgeable about, you know, our native plant life. So, so I can incorporate in people's gardens, either native or ornamental, whatever anyone wants. So I'm using my home as an office and for storage materials, you know, as shovels, rakes, things like that, until I grow enough to be able to have my own facility where I can have, you know, bigger things like actual plants and mulch and stones. But for right now, I just want to be able to just give client advice, or maybe even help in planting gardens. And that's about it for right now, until I build the clientele big enough to be able to have a facility of my own.
Okay. So you will not have a commercial vehicle stored on the property. Is that correct?
No, the homeowners will get their own supplies. They will get their own plants, their own mulch. Everything will be delivered home. And I will help them plant it, mulch, edging, trimming, things like that. It's not a lawn care service. It's just gardening services. So I will just help you, you know, build your gardens.
Okay. Questions from the board? George, you're muted.
I'm really familiar with this sort of operation because a friend of mine in East Long Meadow has been doing this for a long time. And I think it's a great idea. And as long as there's no large trucks or equipment to be seen from the street, we're in good shape.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To accept? Yep.
Yes, I'm moved to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Take care. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, now we jump to, excuse me, item number six, case SPRW 2021-38, request for site plan review waiver for a integrative psychiatry office at 124 Shaker Road, assessors parcel ID 28A-3-69, in an existing structure in the Business Zoning District, applicant Shawna McCarthy, 63 Buinmar Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Shawna, you're muted, and we can't see you yet.
The camera thing, I don't know. Ah, there you go. Hello.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, hello?
How are you?
I'm well. Say hello to the board members.
Hello, board members.
Okay. Hey, so tell us a little bit about yourself and about the business. Is this the new office building next to East Long Meadow Veterinary, like next to Acres Power Equipment? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so my name is Shawna McCarthy. I've lived in East Long Meadow for over 21 years, raised my children here, been in the same house. And I currently work as a nurse practitioner at Bay State Wing Hospital on their gery psych unit. I'm also the program director there. I ran into Cindy Kennedy, who owns Pursue Wellness. And she was telling me about her business. And I thought, oh my, that is, I would love to do that. And she said, well, come on along. No intention of leaving my job. I was happy where I was. And I, this is an opportunity I couldn't pass up. Basically, what I'll be doing is running a functional medicine practice that is targeted towards mental health illness. Primarily, my main focus is going to be dementia and depression, and helping these people with ways they can improve their memory through diet, stress management, exercise. There's also a yoga studio there. There's a massage therapist. It's a beautiful, beautiful practice that she has invited me to join. So I feel very honored.
So you are, you're going to have a separate practice from hers, but co-located?
Exactly, in the same building.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
That's so moved.
Do I have a second?
Cassandra's going to second it.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Sound, it sounds like a fascinating opportunity and certainly something that's badly needed. So best of luck to you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, take care.
Thanks, bye.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, item number seven, case ANR 2021-05, Vineland Worthy Donald Avenue, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to create three lots from three parcels of land, lot 156456-566, assessors parcel ID 3B-42, and on 10,081 plus or minus square, square feet. And lot 2567-568, assessors parcel ID 3B-41, on 11,919 plus or minus square feet. And lot, and lot 3618-623, assessors parcel ID 3B-40, on 10,000 plus or minus square feet, located in the Residence C zoning district, applicant and owner, the estate of Frank F. and Evelyn C. Vecchiarleli, CO Patricia Alex, 125 Smith Avenue, East Long Meadow, MA.
Hello, someone here for the petitioner?
Yes, this is Paul Smith, the land surveyor speaking.
Hi, how are you? No picture?
I'm old. No, I don't do that stuff. I'm old. You know me.
We are too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much, I don't have much of a need for that.
Some of us are. So, so can you, so I'm pretty familiar with that property and that part of town. And I really spent as much time as I could. Is there going to be one lot on Vineland, one on Worthy, and one on Donald, essentially where the frontage is for those three lots?
Well, I would say the corner of Worthy and Donald would be up to the potential builder. But if it were me, I would face it on Worthy.
Okay.
You know, it's got a corner lot, it's got a pretty substantial frontage on both streets. So I suppose you could face it on Donald Avenue.
Okay.
But I would imagine it being faced on Worthy.
Yeah, okay. And each lot will be buildable?
Yes, they'll have the square footage, utilities available, water sewer, and they all have the square footage. They meet the zoning. I don't see any issue with anything.
Okay. Any questions? From the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to endorse the plan?
So moved to endorse the plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston? George, you're muted. You're muted, George. George, you're muted.
What's he doing?
Yeah, I seem to have lost the meeting somehow. I'm in favor of this. I, I don't recall seeing the plans for this in the.
Yeah, they were. Yep.
Were they? Okay.
Yeah, they were. And I'm in favor of it as well. So this, this, so we have approved this. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Case ANR 2021-06, Fairway Lane, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to convey parcel A from existing lot A to lot seven to form new lot seven R, 23,583 plus or minus square feet, and eight R, 42,660.37 plus or minus. And eight R, 42,660.37 plus or minus square feet. Applicant Michael Carabetta, 202 Allen Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
Mr. Carabetta available?
I don't see his name. Um, if there's anyone else, you can raise your hand. I can bring you in. I don't, yeah, I don't see anyone.
What's the board's pleasure?
I would like Mr. Carabetta to present his plan.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to continue till our next meeting?
Still moved to continue.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to continue this until the next meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, case, uh, item number eight, case site 2021-6 Deer Park Drive. Request for site plan review for the installation of a seven plus or minus foot fence and storage of equipment and materials associated with CWA Realty Business Operations at Deer Park Drive. Assessors parcel IDs 11-6-4A in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District. Applicant CWA Realty, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, MA.
I don't know which one he's on, so I just sent them both in.
Okay.
I'm on this one. I'm William Arment and Charlie, my uncle, is on the other one. Unfortunately, we had to separate for the meeting. So he'll probably do most of the talking.
So do either one of you have cameras?
Can you hear me or no?
I can hear someone speaking, yes. Do you have a camera on your computer?
I thought it was on. Help me out, Will.
I just prompted you to start it. It should have a button.
You prompted me to start mine. You need to do the other one, please.
This is confusing, okay. Oh, I don't know. I think I did it wrong.
Any luck?
We just had Will, uh, there's Will. Oh, okay. Hello?
They work?
Yes, okay.
How are you?
I'm well. So tell us, uh, what you have in mind for this parcel.
Well, we are from East Long Meadow.
Yep.
Our business has been in Springfield for 67 years. We purchased this property with the intent to move to East Long Meadow. We dealt with the, uh, Mass West to purchase the property and eventually hopefully in the near future, put a building up out there. In the interim, we'd like to store material there and equipment there. Like I say, with the plan of moving out to East Long Meadow permanently in the near future. So right now, we just need to fence the area. We get quite a bit of trash dumped on there from whoever. We dealt with the police department, helpful, and our budding neighbors, but, uh, we're still not stopping all of it. So the fence is gonna help us with that, I hope.
So I drove there Sunday. Was, um, surprised at the number of, uh, trailers that you had.
Yes.
There. So, um, are you storing vacant trailers on the property?
No, those trailers have material that we use for jobs in them. The trailers are not gonna stay there. We, we need to, again, our plan is to put up a building. But financially, we need a couple of years to get back to that point.
So essentially they're temporary, they're your temporary structures to have product in?
Temporary storage, yes.
Okay. Is there a way to make them more presentable as in, you know, in a row rather than kind of random? Because, you know, you drive down that park, that industrial park, there are some really beautiful buildings along there. And then you come to your property and it seems to be extremely disorganized. I'm sure not for you because you know where everything is, but, uh, it would be nice if you could do some, I, I guess in, in an office environment, you call it space planning. But, uh, i- if you're gonna put the fence up, it's not gonna be able to cover all of the, you know, all of the equipment that you have there, but it would be nice to actually put some order to the property. So.
Yeah, we, we actually moved out of several different facilities to go to that one. So, and we kinda did it hastily when we made the move. We've been hitting at that. Occasionally, we're, obviously, we're very busy at work right now.
Yep.
That is our plan to, you know, again, organize it better for our use and for the overall view of the street.
So if you just, if you commit to us that you're gonna try to do that in the fairly near future, that would be wonderful.
I would do that before the snowflakes this year.
Okay. Um, other questions from the board?
Yeah, um, through the chair, I find that the site plan is presented to be incomplete. You have a structure on the site, which is not shown on the plan. You have fencing on the site, which is not shown on the plan. You have a curb cut and a driveway, which are not shown on the plan. And those are typically, those are supposed to be there on, for a site plan. I would also call your attention to, uh, section five, paragraphs 5.00 through 5.08 of the zoning bylaw. One of which, um, requires that there be a 50-foot buffer from the road to, a vegetated buffer from the road to the actual facilities that are there, which we're not seeing. And which also requires that outside storage have a opaque fence between the road and the storage area, which is also not there. You have been there for over a year now. And, and none of that has been addressed.
And this is your bylaw?
Any, any indication that that is going to be addressed? So I'd appreciate your comments on that.
Is this your, the town's bylaw or the development's bylaw?
This is the town bylaw, page 5, 1 and 5, 2, section 5, Industrial Garden Park District, Special Use Regulations.
I'm not familiar with it, but I'll take a look at it and I'll have to, uh, I'll have to, uh,
So who drew the plan for you to submit it?
Will. Will, you there?
Yeah, Michael Smith did the fence plan for us, um, on that property. And there is no permanent structures and I don't have any fence up anywhere. I do have the two access gates by the, by the cement blocks, but we don't have any fence standing.
As I recall, you, at one point, you did have fencing there, at least when you had the buses there. But you, the concrete blocks constitute essentially a fence and it's not shown there. I certainly don't have the 50-foot buffer. And you have a driveway with a curb cut. I don't know whether you got, uh, DPW approval for the curb cut or not. Uh, I haven't heard from them about whether that happened. You have a driveway, there's a building there. It may be a temporary building, but it's a building. It really ought to be shown on the site plan.
That, that building is a mobile unit. It gets put up, picked up, put on a trailer and moved as an office building for site work. It's just there for storage. There's not, it's not actually being used at that facility.
It, it's a gatehouse, which looks relatively prominent.
I, I moved it there myself, George. I wouldn't lie to you. I moved it with a set of forks and it gets moved. Right now, the twin to that is also being used at Cartamundi for testing for the COVID, for the people entering the facility. It's a mobile unit. It's not at that site for any use. It's just there for storage.
I'm looking at a gatehouse.
I know exactly what you're saying, George. I'm not disagreeing with you that there is a gatehouse next to the gate. All I'm saying is it's not, it's there temporarily to move to the next site. It's not.
At the present time, it's there. It should be shown on the site plan as being there.
Even though it's, even though it's just being stored as excess material and equipment for my next job?
There, there's no equipment there. That's a gatehouse. Somebody sits there and opens the gate.
That, it's, that is not what its purpose is for at Deer Park. The, the, the gatehouse, the twin to it is at Cartamundi being used. They get moved to different job sites, George. It's not meant for that facility at all.
And why is it sitting there by the gate and it's been there for a month and a half?
Because it was a convenient place to unload it and you just asked me to make sure things are organized. Where am I supposed to put it? Where the kids aren't gonna blow the windows out of it if I put it in the rear?
So, so, George, do you have more?
All, all I'm gonna say is all I see on the, on the site plan is an empty lot. No indication of where the storage is actually gonna be. The curb cut, the driveway, the, uh, the gate, the, um, essential wall of, of concrete. And certainly not seeing the 50-foot buffer that's supposed to be there. I, I don't see how, um, that is an adequate site plan for this site. And, and, and I, if we were to approve it, we'd be just leaving it wide open for whatever has, wants to happen there. That's my, my opinion.
Pete, John, or, or Cassandra, comments?
I, I'm going with George. I, I, I think that the gatehouse definition might be a little bit incorrect. But certainly if there's a curb cut and a driveway, it has to be on the plan to show in reference to where the fence is gonna be. It has to be there. The building, the building, I, I would let that go because it's a mobile piece. They're gonna pick up, put somewhere else. It probably doesn't have a foundation. Uh, that's not a problem, but certainly the curb cut, the driveway, any, any structure that's supposed to be there. And if it says in the bylaw, there's a guy, has to be a buffer, there has to be a buffer shown. And it has to be there.
All right. Jonathan, do you wanna add anything?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, it, it seems like kind of a, uh, just a minor correction that needs to be put on the plan.
Yeah.
So something that could be perhaps, uh, you know, made, you know, i- i- if, if approved, kind of like go to have this reflected for those final plans.
I, I don't think anyone is opposing approval once the plan is complete.
Exactly.
So I think what we, you know, obviously you need to ask us to do this, but I would make a record if asked that you, continue this to our next meeting, which is September when, Bethany? Early September?
I believe it's the 7th.
September 7th, so that Mr. Or, you know, the individual you used to develop the plan for cementals to the planning board, put the final touches on it and resubmit it so that we can take care of this at our next meeting.
We can get that done.
So can I just ask, uh, so you're asking for the curb cuts to be shown? Can you just clarify what you prefer to be shown? If we have anything more to discuss, we can.
So, George, why don't you cite the section?
The section is section five of the Special Use Regulations of the Industrial Garden Park District. It's page 5-1 and 5-2 of the zoning bylaw, which is available on our website. And particular attention to sections 5.02 exterior construction, 5.03, uh, rubbish and trash, 5.04 outside storage. I don't know if you have any fuel storage on the site, but if you do, 5.05 fuel storage, 5.06 landscaping, 5.07 fences, and 5.08 additional dimensional and density requirements.
And, and if you need any follow-up, uh, you can certainly contact Bethany Yao, who is the Director of Planning and Community Development. So who I know is taking notes, because I can see her taking notes on this. So.
I'd like, I'd like both of our Met brothers just to know that it, when we approve things, we have to maintain a consistency. So that everybody, nobody can say, well, you let this guy do that and you're making me do this. So that's, it's just, it's just an informality or kind of a formality that, that we have to go through. Please understand that.
I'm fine with that. No, we'll, we'll get.
Okay, okay, great. So a motion to continue to our next, um, board meeting?
Still moved to continue.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm a, uh, yes as well. Thank you and we'll see you on September 7th.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Next item, please.
Okay, next, next item.
Mike, Mike Carabetta is in the audience. If you wanna go backwards, it's up to you guys.
Okay, John, you?
Uh, sure. Uh, all right, we will go back. Uh, case number nine, oh, I apologize. Uh, all right, case number eight, case A and R 2021-6 Fairway Lane. Request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to convey parcel A from an existing lot eight to lot seven to form new lot seven R. 23,583 plus or minus square feet. And eight R, 42,660.37 plus or minus square feet. Applicant Michael Carabetta, 202 Allen Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
Mr. Carabetta, welcome back.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well. So explain what you're trying to do.
All right, so lot eight and lot seven, and what we're gonna do is move the lot line a little bit to facilitate a house to fit the building envelope on lot eight. So you can see the dotted line as it exists now. And I think you'll see the new line on the right is the line we wanna create, the new lot line between seven, lot seven and lot eight.
So you're not, you're not adding additional lots? You're just moving, you're just moving the lot line?
Just moving a lot line to facilitate a building, a building, M, a house that'll fit the building envelope on lot eight, cause it's a unique building envelope.
All right. Any questions?
We have.
Michael, does that have sufficient frontage?
Yes, it does. Yeah, we're not changing the frontage on either lot, just the sideline.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to endorse the plan? Moved? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion to endorse the plan, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi, as long as Mike smiles once.
Mr., Mr. Torsia, just once.
Fair enough.
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
And I, I am as well. Thank you for clarifying that for us, Michael.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Have a good night.
Next item, Mr. Torsia.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, we went through item number nine. Item number 10 is the same exact, but it's for seven Deer Park Drive. I'm not sure if we have already basically acted on it or we need to read item number 10, but.
So Bethany, do we need to reread this and react on this?
Um, I would do a separate motion. It's a four separate parcel, although ownership.
Okay.
Separate hearing, so we need to.
All right.
During and.
Okay, go ahead, John.
All right. So item number 10, case site 2021-7 Deer Park Drive. Request for site plan review for installation of a seven plus or minus foot fence and storage of equipment and material associated with CWA Realty Business Operations at Deer Park Drive. Assessors parcel ID 11-2-2B in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District. Applicant CWA Realty, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, MA.
So I, I don't know if the petitioners are still available, but, um, I think they heard what we have in mind and would we probably do a, a motion to continue to their, to the next meeting?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To add that, um, the same objections to the previous plan are for this one. It's incomplete. And also that there appear to be, um, a large pile of logs and construction debris on that site. And that, uh, it would be great when the petitioners come back, they could address that. Particularly as with regard to, um, again, section five. particularly as with regard to again, section five, and where um waste that can be stored on a site, because there are certain setbacks required and so on.
So Bethany, can you please get a hold of the petitioner, let them know the additional concern on that on this property, please?
Also, with pounding of logs is a safety concern, especially with the amount of people that run around through there with uh logs the junk dumpers and all that, so that should be addressed also.
Okay. So a motion to continue to our next meeting on September seventh?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Set.
Motion made and second, it's any further discussion, hearing none by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Uh, hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson? Mr. Punderson?
I I heard nothing for a minute, what was the?
So it's a motion to continue to our next board meeting?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
And I am as well. Okay, next item.
All right, item number, item number eleven, case site twenty twenty-one dash eight, thirty-one Benton Drive, request for site plan review for a seven thousand three forty-four plus or minus square foot proposed commercial building and associated site improvements at thirty-one Benton Drive, assessors parcel ID nine dash eight dash twelve on a one point six seven plus or minus acre site in the industrial garden park zoning district applicant applicant applicant, sorry, LaPlante Construction, Inc., C.O. William LaPlante, sixty-one R North Main Street, Suite One, East Long Meadow, M.A.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Christopher.
Hey, who would like to start?
I think I would like to start, uh, my name is Christopher Carney, I work as a civil engineer and land surveyor at our Lebec Associates in Westfield, and I'm here tonight uh on behalf of William LaPlante of LaPlante Construction, um, the property owner, Whitestone Property Management, and the existing business Go Graphics, and I'm here tonight to request site plan review for proposed building expansion located at thirty-one Benton Drive in East Long Meadow. Uh, the proposed project would include the construction of a seven thousand three hundred and forty-four square foot commercial building and associated site improvements. Uh, before I get too far into tonight's presentation, I'd like to go over some permitting history for this project. Uh, we've had the pleasure of going in front of Conservation Commission and received approval for the plan as shown. Uh, we did have some uh wetland buffer restoration proposed on our plan, and as part of the conditions of uh conservation approval, we will increase the wetland area replication. Additionally, we've gone in front of the zoning court of appeals in order to uh request a variance from a forty-foot side yard setback to a twenty-foot side yard setback, and that variance was granted by the CBA already. Now, so I think we can head into the plan set, and I'll begin to share my screen.
Okay.
One second. Yep, okay, you're all set.
I'm gonna try to take advantage of our technology while we still have it here. So this is the site, we're in thirty-one Benton Drive, uh, and if you, uh, if we look at the existing building here, you'll see that it is Go Graphics facility and a building here with a parking lot paved and a gravel parking area back here. Just so we can familiar it, I familiarize ourselves with this, I'll drop a little pin on here so we all recognize this area. Proposed work would be off to the left in this gravel area.
Okay.
So these are the uh site plans that we submitted as part of this project. The existing condition plan is always a great place to start. As we looked at aerial photos, we were able to see this paved area for parking and then a gravel area here, here, and the existing building right here, along with the wetland area here and associated offers. Also noticed that tree planting is in front. Uh, this gravel area we're definitely discussing throughout the night, as well as the paved area. Uh, the existing parcel is one point six seven acres, and the entire parcel and adjoining parcels are in the industrial garden park zone. Generally, the topography of the lot, the of the lot is such that it's a bit lower at Benton Drive, slopes uh up a little bit and then back down to a catch basin right here, and then it continues to slope down to this bordering vegetated wetland located on the west side of the property. Uh, currently, this catch basin flows into a catch basin on Benton Drive. Not much is proposed uh as far as stormwater management, we'll definitely get into that portion of the project as we move through the plan set. Uh, the next two sheets are note sheets, I'll skip over those, and I look at the demolition and removal plan next. As you can see, nothing is really proposed on the northern side, but we do have some proposed demolition and removal in the back. This is the existing paved area, as part of this project, we would be removing a portion of the pavement right here. Additionally, uh, in this hatched area would be gravel. Uh, some of this gravel area will be removed and replaced with lowland seed, some of this gravel area is the home of the future building. Also see pavement cuts here, which are recommended uh for various utility crossings and grading required on this thing. Looking at the layout sheet, um, this is a a great sheet to look at for an overall view of the project. This is the proposed building location, as as mentioned, seven thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet, and it's gonna be used in conjunction with the existing building for Go Graphics right here. Uh, proposed parking is generally in the same area. We have nine parking spots on the west side of the property, so five spots in the front, and then one spot in the rear, that's a total count of fifteen parking spaces. Uh, prior to beginning this project, we were working with um Kevin Duquette, with building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, and uh we received an email for him about parking, and he had a summary of technically, there should be approximately fourteen to fifteen parking spaces for the entire parcel with the square footage of the existing and proposed buildings.
Okay.
So uh he recommended fourteen to fifteen, and we'll be able to provide fifteen parking spaces. Uh, traffic patterns will generally remain the same, the curb cut will be altered slightly. As mentioned before, some of the paved area will be removed, but there will be some additional paving here. Much more pavement is being removed than added in this project. Uh, it definitely reflects an overall reduction of paved surface cover on this site. Additionally, the gravel area is gonna be reduced, so see this hatching along the west, south, and east side of the building, where it will be lowland seed, and that that'll feed into uh any discussion we want to have about drainage. Uh, moving forward, we can go to the grading erosion sedimentation control plan. This plan shows the grading for the parcel, which is is really minimal for this project, we're showing some contour lines here. The grading will remain the same in the whole northern part of the property. There'll be some limited grading on the south side of the building, just to make sure uh stormwater is controlled and there's no flooding at the building area, and there'll be slight grading in the gravel area. Uh, and the reason for this grading in gravel area, so we can control stormwater, it's a stormwater to a gravel apron here, called a level spreader. Various names, but it'll help clean water before it discharges eventually to the bordering vegetated wetland. A lot of the stormwater on this site is captured by this catch basin, which flows to this catch basin. Because we're reducing onsite paved areas, the amount of water entering this catch basin is reduced in post-development conditions. Additionally, since we're removing so much gravel area and and um placing the building within an existing gravel surface cover, stormwater flows to the bordering vegetated wetland to the west are also reduced. Overall, this site uh is a substantial benefit in terms of stormwater because we are reducing stormwater outflow from the site as well as um cleaning or providing additional water quality. I I've been in contact with Tom Christensen, who is the superintendent, deputy superintendent at Department of Public Works. Uh, we've been discussing the stormwater management plan for this pro- property, and uh as noted here, this project is exempt from the stormwater permit application. We can read on and say however he would like to have some a- account for the runoff in the form of the drainage design and corresponding drainage calculations for site review. I've discussed some of those uh briefly, and we do have a stormwater memo that's been sent to Tom Christensen and.
How? Today, today at three o'clock.
Today at three o'clock, or no, today, I mean, today is eleven o'clock, but regardless, if if there was not enough time for Tom Christensen to review this, and he has not provided an opinion, but you know, as as board, we can uh, you have the ability to vote on this project with or without his approval, and we can go into the standards for review, but what we're really uh jurisdictionally looking at is the adequacy of method methods of disposal for sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water. Uh, I think our plan set definitely shows that we have adequate drainage, there'll be no ponding or flooding of the property or adjacent properties. Water quality will be improved by removing paved areas and removing gravel surface cover and adding a roof, and and as we all know, Mass D E P considers roof runoff to be clean. So we're removing a lot of surface cover that provide, that creates uh dirty water, water with total suspended solids in it, and we're replacing it with cover that is lowland seed and roof, which is clean water runoff. Uh, additionally, as we go into this this memo, um, we're gonna quickly look at the a chart which shows flow rates. Design point one represents the infrastructure in the street, all the water that enters a catch basin onsite and flows to the street. As you can see, for the two-year storm, the ten-year storm, and the hundred-year storm event, post-development conditions have a reduced runoff. Design point two represents the bordering vegetated wetland on the west side of the site, and as we can see, for the same two, ten, and hundred-year storm events, stormwater runoff is considerably reduced to the bordering vegetated wetland. So we we can demonstrate improvement in water quality and a reduction in off-site discharge, peak rate discharge. Getting back to the plan set, uh, the grading plan also shows erosion sedimentation control. Uh, that's gonna be in the form of a construction apron here, a gravel path so that trucks can leave the site, and dirt will be knocked off tires in order to reduce uh tracking of debris or sills into the roadway. Additionally, we're gonna propose uh silt sacks in existing catch basins. Those are temporary measures and and truly uh fabric that's placed inside the catch basin to catch any sediment before it enters your city infrastructure. Those are very important erosion control measures. And then finally, we're gonna propose a silt fence located at the downgrade limit of work so that if there is any sediment uh generated from the construction and a heavy rainstorm event does occur, this silt fence will be able to control erosion and eliminate any sediment runoff from the construction area into the B B W. Uh, moving past grading and erosion, sedimentation control, we'll head to the uh utility sheet. Um, utilities here, a number of different routes have been taken. Uh, you'll see many of the uh utilities come in from Benton Drive, that would be gas, water, and a sanitary sewer connection are proposed into Benton Drive, and then electric would be proposed from the existing power pole here. Um, as part of the sanitary utility connection, we're proposing a subsurface oil-water separator in the building, and these are required, because this building has an overhead door, it'll have have a drain in the floor, and that drain in the floor is required to have this oil-water separator. That way, if any materials are uh put into the floor drains, they're properly uh treated here in the oil-water separator before they hit a manhole and or enter uh your town's infrastructure. Finally, we can get to the landscaping sheet, uh, you you do have, Benton Drive is is very well landscaped, it's it's an attractive street for an industrial area, uh, so we're we're showing the existing trees, but then we're also gonna show uh proposed trees and uh along the street frontage, and that'll fill in some gaps for the tree line along the street. And then, as previously noted, we did uh originally have some restoration plantings here along the wetland buffer, but as part of the conditional approval from Conservation Commission, those plantings will be increased, and this area will be uh somewhat restored uh to its original condition. We're planting native plants there uh recommended by Conservation in order to. Uh, the final sheets of this plan set are details that I don't think we need to go over. Um, uh, as a final thing, final end to this presentation, I'd like to present a memo from the uh butter to the south of this, that's McGill Hose and Coupling, they have a similar type of building, a sheet metal building, it's located to the south, and and they've written a nice letter describing their uh hopes that this project is approved. And this has been presented to the board a while ago. I think for me, that's gonna wrap up my presentation, but of course, I'm I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Anyone else in the petitioner wanna offer comments before I open it to the board? Board members, questions, concerns, discussion?
I I just read that Tom had a chance to look at the the uh stormwater plan, and um I personally think it's a fantastic presentation. Um, I'm I would like to see it go, but I hear Tom Christensen say, I agree.
George?
I don't know if you can tell us this, but is this going to be an expansion for Go Graphics, or is it gonna be a a new business going in there?
It is an expansion of the Go Graphics property, they'll have two buildings, but it's the same business.
Okay. Uh, my my one concern is, um, I know that you're meeting statutory requirements for parking, which is great. Uh, when I drive by there, which I do three times a week, uh, because I go to a gem down at the end of the street, uh, I notice the parking lot is almost always full with vehicles that are either waiting to be worked on or uh already have been worked on. How is that part of the parking going to be dealt with, and can you comment on that?
Yeah, I I mean, generally, it will follow existing pattern, we're we're adding a few more parking spots, and as you mentioned, is we we meet the statutory requirements. Uh, additionally, as we design all these sites, we're gonna uh be in constant communication with uh the contractor there, William LaPlante, as well as the owner, and we've been reassured from the owner that the parking shown, fifteen spaces, will be adequate for his business. So the applicant or the owner feels this is enough parking and your regulations.
Christopher, how many spaces? I'm sorry.
There are fifteen, fifteen spaces, fourteen traditional spaces and one uh handicap space.
Okay, but exist, now exist, existing now, how many are there?
Oh, I I can look at the site plan, uh, they're not delineated with stripes very well.
Because of the gravel and all the stuff and all that I mentioned, right?
We can guess at it, but I think it's an extra few spots.
Is it gonna afford an opportunity for them to keep some of their finished vehicles inside, or is it just all, you don't know?
You know, I I can't really comment on the inner workings of building, but it is a sizable building, and I'd imagine they're wrapping these buildings in stickers, they'd probably want to keep them clean and housed in the uh building as much as possible.
Okay.
Additional questions? Discussion? Hearing Chairman?
It looks like a really good project and expansion uh and up to tax base, I love it.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's a, it looks a great project, but I kinda echo what Pete thinks. Um, just as one, and just a, is a little confused, but this is basically, this is not for kind of office purposes, this is more working on or manufacturing the material at Go Graphic or working on the cars that are getting detailed. This is what the proposed building would be for?
Yeah, I I I'm not sure how much manufacturing goes on, I I believe their stickers and and the different signs are are purchased and then placed on the vehicles and these, but I I'd have to uh refer to William LaPlante and the owner for a better description of the interior workings of the building, but I think generally that's outside of this.
Okay. All right, um, hearing no other discussion, what's the board's pleasure?
Well, I I make a motion to accept accept the plan, um, I think it's, I think it's needed, I think it's actually gonna enhance the area rather than just having all these vehicles parked outside and, you know, kudos to Go Graphics for getting large enough to do it, it's fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order, this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
And it needs to be open to the public.
Yeah, thank you, so I will open it to the public for anyone who has comments on it. So if you are interested in uh being heard on this issue, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the, or can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So any discussion on closing the public hearing? Okay, hearing none by roll call. Mr. Torsa.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you for keeping me straight, Mr. Kingston. So I think, I think we are back to, so I believe Mr. Punderson had a motion to approve?
Right. I would like, I'd like to put in one caveat that I need to see Tom Christensen sign off on this. So maybe that can be a condition of the approval. It's just, it's just the way it should be done.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion with the condition? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsa.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you to Go Graphics for continuing to grow in East Long Meadow. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, board. We appreciate your support.
Okay, take care.
Thank you very much, board. I appreciate it.
Congratulations to my ex neighbor. Great job.
Next item.
Yes, item number, oh, I'm sorry, our other business, Hometown Lawn and Property Services LLC. Discussion of existing site plan waiver for home office at 158 Maple Street. Assessors parcel ID seventeen dash twenty-eight dash five in the residence B zoning district. Applicant Daniel Beauregard, 158 Maple Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So just to, so for both Ms. Sarah Swallow and the public, this property and the property owner visited with the planning board last year based upon a number of complaints that a business was in operation at that location. The petitioner indicated that he was either purchasing or leasing property in Indian Orchard, part of Springfield, and was going to essentially move all the products that he had at the premises at 158 Maple Street there and would essentially, his employees would report there and operate out of that location. Apparently, from, well, at least from Thanksgiving on, there was no activity at that location with respect to running the business. Subsequently, this spring and early summer, there was renewed activity with both, well, certainly with product in the garage and certainly repair work done on vehicles on the driveway. We had indicated that we would revisit this in July of this year and see what type of action, if any, needed to take place. And so this is the revisiting of the meeting from last fall. Mr. Beauregard, would you like to address the board?
How are you?
I'm well. So there clearly has been business activities at the property at 158 Maple Street. Clearly, there has been employees there again. There has been materials in the garage again. There has been loading and unloading of the materials onto your trucks again. There has been repair work done on the black dump truck with the wooden sides on it. And then the stand, or the standalone trailer, small trailer has had, I think was there for probably five days in a row, having repair work done on it as well. And this is kind of in contrary to what you told the board would happen last fall. So can you address those?
Yes, I, and so I did take on a piece of property in Indian Orchard. And it is a shared garage, was currently, had three tenants in there. Two had moved out, one had not. My space was supposed to be given to me much earlier, but the, because the tenant, I guess, was, had some issues with closing and moving, kept getting delayed, kept getting delayed. So I was able to move majority of all my equipment and materials over there, but not quite able to have all the space that I was allotted or supposed to have. So I did try to pursue other avenues. I also acquired some space at a local farm to now put everything out. So there's nothing here. There's no vehicles. There's no trucks. There's no equipment. I had all the mowers and trailers as far as the daily activity work, working from this farm and other location. All season, so they're not stored there. The employees are not coming here. We're not loading and unloading in the street. We're not blocking traffic. We do still service quite a few of my neighbors and customers around, so I do have them actually parked on Rogers to not even be on the main road when they are servicing these lawns for the neighbors and customers as well, too. You know, there was a delay, and I certainly wanted to try to do something quicker financially. I was a little bit handcuffed and I was in an agreement with the facility in Indian Orchard. It is a family friend type situation that was kind of previously that was kind of dragging their feet and pushing and pulling things along. So again, I went to outside sources to look for other locations and was able to find the farm as well, too. So as of August first, I was able to obtain more space there as well. And now the tenants for Rogers Road are also gone as of about a week ago. So now we have space available for both places. And, you know, there's nothing here. And I was trying to get, you know, things out as best and quickly as possible to get out of, to get into compliance with what you have requested.
So I think last year, you also indicated that you had, or someone from your business had spoken to someone at the high school about parking your employees' vehicles in the high school parking lot. I checked with the school superintendent, who indicated that that was not the case and that they would never allow, have allowed that. So I find that a little concerning. Can you address that?
I spoke to the, like, I forget his last name, the officer. I was in a, kind of like the short officer that's kind of posted over there. And he had asked, I had asked, spoke with him. He mentioned, you know, potentially going in and or getting permits or permit passes. And I offered to do so, and he said it wasn't necessary. I didn't follow through with the, with the school themselves. Nobody is parking back there. There's nobody back there at this time. I kind of went on his word of, hey, should I go ask? He's like, no, I'm here. You're okay. I probably should have followed through and actually went through the right channels versus just speaking with the officer. I believe it was Mike Healy, I think was the last name, Officer Healy.
So, Mr. Beauregard, you've been cited a number of times by the building department. You've actually been fined by the town for being in violation of actually running the business outside of the approval for the site plan waiver. There have been a number of citations by the building department, who is also, the building commissioner is also the zoning enforcement officer. What, what should give us any type of assurance that if we don't do anything this evening and we allow the site plan waiver to remain in place for only an office, that there will not be additional violations?
I was trying to stay in compliance when he asked, talked to the zoning commissioner, that he said to put a temporary structure or carport originally. And that's what I did. And then when the carport failed, that's when the violation began, or the notice, and then the single violation for that. And then since obviously consequently moved the equipment off site, because I couldn't keep it covered or obstructed from view. So I, again, was trying to comply with, you know, with his request to do so. I spent five hundred dollars on a carport per his request, and that was something that would be acceptable for time being. And then obviously, that failed with the weather conditions when it fell over and collapsed. I mean, at this moment, like I said, I mean, if there wants to be a review, there is nothing here. I have no problem having the property opened up to be viewed for that case. There is no equipment. There's no people here. I know you yourself, I believe, are in the area. And I'm sure in the last couple of weeks, you haven't seen any vehicles there whatsoever.
I haven't seen any, anything since you got notice of this meeting. So it's incredibly frustrating for someone that travels that area all the time for the blatant disregard for the town zoning ordinance. The other thing I, the other thing I thought of was there are other property management companies slash landscapers who, to do business in town and can't store their vehicles on their properties because they can't, you know, shield them from view. They actually rent property. So that's an added expense for them, which you didn't have because you were using your residential property. And I think of, is there an unfairness here as well in all of this?
I mean, I'm renting two properties at the moment. And one of the properties, like I said, I was promised additional space. And that was, I was unavailable to use all the space that I was promised. I deducted some rent, but it still was paying rent. Now I'm paying two places just because I want to be proactive and still try to find another facility or place to get equipment away and out of here. So now I'm paying currently rent for two places, so I'm kind of doubled up on that part.
Well, I think I'm hogging the conversation. Is there other board members with any questions?
I would just comment that all of us drive up and down Maple Street all the time. So you're in a very visible position. You really need to be very careful about what the chairman is complaining about and which we're all seeing as we drive up and down there. Okay, it's obvious. It's out in the open. And willing to accept that you've reformed and you have places to do this now, and we're not gonna see it there. If we do see it again, we're gonna have to go through this whole process all over again. And you don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. So let's try to keep it where it's supposed to be. Okay, you know, as Russ says, you're right on the main drag. Okay, we can't miss it. That's all I got to say.
I know I'm newer to the board, but I live right near that property. And I drive by it twice a day, every day, and I walk by it twice a day, every day. And it bothered me before I was on the board because you always have your trucks, or you used to, in the street. Especially in the morning hour, you'd be loading up when there's already the traffic from the school. And it's already a cluster there, especially with the horseshoe setup and the people leaving school. And then to have multiple landscaping trucks blocking the main road is a real concern. And I would hate to see that with the school year coming up again for it to repeat, because that's a real problem.
And I, and I don't want you to think you're being singled out, because I can with a very clear conscience say that I have probably given Mr. Duquette upwards of twenty to twenty-five violations to look at this year. He's probably sick of hearing from me. But, you know, we're planning board members. We're here. We deal with the zoning ordinance all day long. And during our meetings, and it's incumbent upon us to be able to point these things out. These zoning regulations are put in place for a variety of reasons. One for safety, two for protection of the property values of the residents of the town. If you're running a business, there potentially could devalue the property values of your neighbors. And then the thing that I would hate to see is then your neighbor says, that person can do it. I'm gonna do the same thing. And next thing you know, you have five businesses running improperly according to the zoning ordinance. So these are put in place for those type of reasons. And we need to act on those when something like this occurs. So I'll open it to the board to either, for a motion. So do you wish to continue this for another six months and take no action? Do you wish to vote to rescind the approval for the home office part of this? I leave it open to the board after hearing from Mr. Beauregard. George, you're muted.
I would make a motion to continue this for three months. Okay, and which will get us through the fall lease season. And if everything's adequate there, then we just get into the plowing season. I think we would be happy that Mr. Beauregard understands the importance of this and will be operating in a new manner.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I will abstain, as I did the first time. I'll use Mr. Beauregard's services.
All right, by roll call, Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Torsa.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm a no. So we'll revisit this in three months if we, if we need to. Thank you. Next item, John, do we have anything on the agenda?
All we have is the director's report.
All right, Bethany.
So short and sweet, just an update. I will be on vacation from the twenty-first until the September second. So Rebecca is your contact person for the office. She's best reached by email or the phone number. If you get a voicemail, please leave one. It goes directly to our emails. And with that, that's all I have.
I'd like to make one note, that I'm gonna be gone from Saturday till October first. But we'll have my computer and we'll be able to join the meetings. Wherever I am, I'll probably be in Yellowstone during the next meeting. So I'll see you all then.
Okay.
Don't let the bears get you.
They wouldn't bite this old hunk of junk anyway.
All right, all right. No other business. We motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsa.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. And I'd just like to say again, Beth, Cassandra, thank you very much for joining our board. We look forward to serving with you on this, and thanks again.
Thank you for inviting me or, you know, having me in part of it.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.